Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May eighth, 2024 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors. If we could stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Chairman Scott Lambert, and I'll introduce everyone here at the table. On my immediate left is Steve Brown, Township Manager. Bernadette Kearney, our Solicitor. To my right, Vice Chair Rich Orlo, and to his right is Peter Fixler, Supervisor. Start off with board briefings. We had executive sessions that were held today, May eighth, at four o'clock to discuss legal personnel and real estate issues. Moving on to our grant application updates from Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two announcements for this evening, one application and one award. As it pertains to traffic, the township submitted a year mark request. This is through for fiscal year 2025 for Route 30 improvements for roughly $3.5 million. And just as a reminder, the township has accrued substantial dollars toward this initiative that we're actively working on design for, and this would be added to that pot of money should we be successful in receiving it. And I'm pleased to announce that there was an award made recently. This is called the Trees for Watersheds Program through the Conservation District for Bacton Hill Park Landscaping for Phase Two for $8,800. That's all for the landscaping, which is a substantial component of that Phase Two project. And if I may, may I just make a small announcement about Parks and Rec events while I'm on the mic? Is that all right? Just a reminder for the board and the public, the first summer concert series event is coming up at Valley Creek Park on May 22nd. The performers will be Dalton and the Sheriffs. It's called "An Evening with the Zacks," and "Pack a Blanket Chairs and a Picnic Basket." Music starts at 6:30. The full list of events is on the township website and also posted in various places throughout the township. And also mark your calendars for our summer movie night. We'll be screening Kung Fu Panda Four, also at Valley Creek Park. We'll have popcorn, snacks from Wawa, a martial arts demonstration, and ice cream from Scoops and Smiles. And this will be on Friday, August 30th. Start time for the events is at 7:00 PM, but the movie starts at sundown, which will probably be sometime around 8:30. Thank you.
Is there a deadline on us having to install the trees at Bacton Hill Park and get the $8,800?
Not yet. No, because we haven't executed the grant agreement yet. So that clock will start running when we execute the agreement.
Thanks, Catherine. Any questions? Nope, all right. Moving on to 2E, I wanted to give our residents a status update on something that has festered for quite some time, and I'll read a statement pertaining to it. And it's regarding the Lamar billboard sign on Route 30 at the eastern portion of Route 30. In 2019, Lamar filed a conditional use and variance for its proposed billboard at 49 East Lancaster Avenue. Lamar was denied its variance at the zoning hearing board, at trial court, at Commonwealth Court levels. In October of 2022, the PA Supreme Court denied Lamar's petition for allowance of appeal, and again, the township prevailed. Lamar took a different procedural approach once they lost at the PA Supreme Court in 2022. And on March 1st of 2024, the Chester County Court of Common Pleas issued an order dismissing Lamar's complaint in...
Mandamus.
Mandamus. Once again, the township prevailed, and then Lamar has appealed its loss to the Commonwealth Court, and briefing schedule has been ordered by the court. We'll keep the township residents informed of the outcome of this Commonwealth Court procedure. Zach, if you can give us some updates here on the zoning ordinance?
Certainly. So we've been plugging this every month. We have a public survey that's currently open, but will be closing on May 12th related to the zoning ordinance update, sort of some discussion of previous planning recommendations, some visual preference kinds of topics. As I said, that'll be closing on May 12th so that the findings can be summarized and provided to the zoning ordinance task force and the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 22nd of May. So please complete the survey.
Thanks. Moving on to board motions and resolutions. 3A. Donna, I guess if you can give us a little background on our wireless microphones for the boardroom.
Yeah, so actually, it's for wireless microphones, and we will not use these anymore. We will not have a problem with people talking over each other. And everything will be, everybody will have their own microphone up here. We'll have here, some here, too. And then the audience will have two, you know, that you can, just like that hand spray. I did not need to take this out for bid because I did a Co-Stars, and I took a poll through the different municipalities that used Applied Video. And it's the total cost, and this is for seven microphones and everything that goes with it, which is a lot of stuff, as you see in your packet. It's, the total cost of all that is $36,000, $36,800. It sounds like a lot, but it's actually, it's comparable to, it's comparable to everybody else that has, and they've spent that much money.
For seven microphones?
It's seven microphones, but it's also, if you look in your packet, the packet shows you exactly what else it has. It's got systems that go with it.
I did look in the packet.
It's got the system, all the cables that go with it, the systems. It has to be run by an actual, like, server-type system that would be over here. So it's not just seven microphones, it's seven microphones plus everything that goes with it. Speaker-wise, they'll have to change some speakers out. There is batteries that go with all that, charging stations. Let's see, what else? Receivers, so, okay.
You don't have to go on it, though.
Okay.
I just, go ahead, Rich.
Oh, it's a, it's a big number.
It is a big number.
You did speak to other townships who have the same equipment, and they are satisfied with it.
Everybody's pleased with it, they're pleased with it. They said that it was the best price that they got. It is a Co-Stars company, so, I mean, it's a good, it's a good brand, so, it's a good brand.
And for us, it solves the issue of not having more than a certain number of microphones on at the same time.
And not having...
Right.
You have these wires that go all over the place. There'll be no more wires, so you'll just have, like, one of these, like, that you'll have one of these.
Right.
You won't have any wires here, because it's wireless, so you can just turn it on and switch.
Right.
I did chop around.
I'm sure you did. Personally, I'm comfortable with the mic set present.
Okay.
Well, I know this is the best price because I've hammered Donna about it over the course of a couple of months anyway, so if you're so inclined, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm okay with this. What happens to the, do we own these?
Yeah. No, we don't own these.
We don't own them, but we would own the wires. Okay. Who owns these? We just lease these?
We lease these.
Oh, so it's a continuing payment anyway? Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, it's not cheap, but it's, with the references and not owning this, having a continual payment, I'm okay making a motion to approve the wireless microphones for the $36,800 and $0.36.
Tense.
Okay, can't forget that.
You got it, second.
I second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay.
See, we can't talk.
You can't vote, you can't vote.
Aye.
So it passes two to one.
And they'll be here by next month?
I hope so.
Okay.
I really do hope so.
Okay.
Buy something to lock them up because we can't have the $36,000 worth of equipment just sitting like everything else is, so we will be locking them up.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Moving on to 3B. Zach, if you can kind of give us an update on the Gunkel Mill repair?
Sure, I'm actually going to hand this over to Jeff Dorr if he's so willing, but I will be playing the part of Rudy tonight.
Thank you very much, Jeff Dorr, Chair of the Historical Commission. You can see from the picture, I think most people know this fairly well, this is Gunkels' Mill. The mill has 23 windows, four doors, and quite a few running feet of trim and soffits on it. It hasn't been painted or worked on in almost 20 years, which is probably too long. And in the last couple of seasons, with a lot of rain in the, in the spring and winter, without adequate coating, it started to deteriorate quite a bit. Maybe I can just show a couple of quick pictures to that effect. Zach, you have some of the pictures. You'll see some of the windows and sills are starting to show signs of rot or cracking. Go ahead, Zach, you can go through that. Here's another one. So a window sill like this needs to be replaced. Fortunately, most of the, the windows themselves can be repaired and won't need to be replaced, but nearly all of them need to be, they're single-pane windows and are going to need to be partially finished and scraped. Go ahead, Zach, you can go a couple more. So these, this is typical for, for what's on the building on the 23 windows. And you'll see some pieces of, of trim have to be done. So the, the project that we're talking about is to do all the woodworking that's required to replace any wood that's actually rotten or in bad condition or repair. It is to re-glaze the windows in, that are in that scrape, prime, and paint everything. One of the things that makes this a very challenging project is its work at elevation. The elevation that's most significant is on the side with the wheel well. They're going to have to rent a 60-foot boom man lift to be able to get at that because you're over that huge hole where the, where the wheel is. So to that end, we got, I had five contractors come to the site to look at the job. Two of them decided not to bid, but three good contractors bid on that, and you have those three bids in your package. And all three contractors were, showed a competence and understanding of the job that I think they'll do a good job for us and can be reliable. Entedesco was the low bidder, and that's the one we're recommending. And I think that's $19,700, if my memory sends me. Okay, okay. I don't know if there's any questions by the...
I, I've got one or two, but I know I reached out to John Neal to see if DPW could end up doing this work, because they do a great job over Valley Creek in keeping that property functioning. But he certainly has indicated that this is kind of specialized in nature. Second question I've got is, are there any other future expenditures you're expecting on Gunkel Mill the next year?
Yeah, there's, there's one other significant project that, that's probably going to need to be addressed, and that's the roof of the building. The building is a cedar roof. It was done, at least 40 years ago was the last time, and that's near the end of a cedar roof's life. If you go inside, and you can actually see the inside of the roof, the side on the north, which is the front-facing one, actually shows no gaps or cracks. But you can see quite a bit of sky through the south side of, of the roof. So it allows a very small amount of water in, but not enough water to do damage at this point. So I don't know, and that's something I'll have to explore, whether you could do half a roof of this type. I don't know whether that's practical or even possible. But that's the one thing I would say in the next year that we almost certainly are going to need to do. You know, between the two, it's, it's really the fundamental maintenance for the building that should keep it alive, and I would expect, because we're going to use good-quality primer and good-quality materials, that we shouldn't be needing to do this very often. Most of the very small projects that there are there, we, we actually do with it, with the members of the Historical Commission, small repairs and stuff, just materials. So we try to keep from coming to you too often for these projects.
Okay. Once completed, how often should it be repainted or touched up?
That's a good question. I want, I want to consult with several more people, but my guess is that we probably should be closer to once a decade if we do, if we really do the job right. One of the things that I don't, not sure they did here, is, is when you have this kind of wood that can be dampened, it's old wood, you should use an oil-based primer. The oil-based primer is a little more expensive and more difficult to work with, but they seal the wood better. And so that's, in that way, we should get at least 10 years' life out of the, out of the surface. But I think we need to also re-inspect more often and see where the, where the issues are.
No, I have nothing. I think it's well-worth, the project, that asset to the township, and we should absolutely fund it.
Make a motion?
I would love to make a motion to accept a proposal for the woodwork and win the repaired Gunkel Mill from PG Entedesco for a price not to exceed $19,695. $19,695.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It passes.
Thank you. I have one other small thing to show you quickly, if I can.
Okay.
That's in 1793. So this five-great-granddaughter who lives in Oregon still had a document prepared by Michael Gunkel. And if you look here, this is a 1790 contract that he made for the building of, a building in Philadelphia, so it's not for our mill. And part of the contract, besides the labor to build the building, was the purchase of 200,000 bricks. So, so she sent us this. We're actually going to deposit it for safekeeping at the Chester County facility that has, in, in West Chester, that has the capability to preserve. You can see we have an acid-free paper. And she also sent us some other information, which allowed me to do some research. So after I did some research on Michael Gunkel, I went to visit him. He's actually buried in the Presbyterian Church at the end of Church Street. If you go, the cemetery is quite a bit older than the building. If you walk behind, the tallest stone is his, and about 15 or 20 of his residents. He owned over 800 acres here, so he owned a very big part of East Whiteland Township during that timeframe. So I just thought I'd share a little history, as long as I'm the history guy.
Thank you.
Moving on to 3C. John Neal?
Good evening. Tonight, we have a resolution for you to consider, the support in favor of Valley Forge Sewer Authority 537 Plan Special Study. This study is related to the potential sale of Tridefrent Township excess capacity at the plant, and also a possible rerate of the plant. We don't need any more capacity, but they need all the member partners to approve this, to move it along with the DEP and the process.
Any sale will be within the current members, obviously.
And it's within the establishment. Yeah, when, it, all the rules are spelled out.
Kind of capacity we have left, any idea? Quite a bit?
We have quite a bit.
Okay.
More than we'll ever really need.
We, okay, so we don't need to buy any?
No.
Okay, good.
Yep. Peter, any more questions? You want to make a motion if not?
Seems like we're in a good position in this regard. Make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to, to resolve in favor of the Valley Forge Sewer Authority 537 Special Study.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes three, nothing.
You guys did not actually vote for the Gunkel Mill. No, yes, they did. Never mind.
Donna, I thought we had taken, I thought we took off D, off the agenda. 2D, 2D, 3D. Got it?
Didn't vote on it.
All right. It, it got, it got skipped in the discussions that we're having, so this is just the approval of Carl Weisbecker to full-time EMT firefighter. So if you can just make a motion, just practical.
Sure. Make a motion to ratify the approval of appointment of Carl Weisbecker. Full-time firefighter, EMT.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's officially ratified this time. Zach, if you can give us information on the, hopefully, the final version of the special events permit?
Yeah, so this actually is sort of a precursor to the, the ordinance hearing later, but this is to amend our fee schedule. So all of our permit fees, all of our, you know, charges that we apply to certain services and things like that, they're all outlined in the schedule of fees. We updated it in '24 for this year, the reorg meeting, and we actually created a special events permit fee of $100 in advance of this ordinance being adopted. We're just simply suggesting that we reduce that to $50 so that it's not unduly impactful on fundraisers and things like that. So we can talk about the ordinance, sort of, in a few items, but that's the associated fee with it.
Yeah, guys, don't refer to the fee schedule in the packet, refer to this one, okay? It's an older one. I think we've kind of talked about this round and round, and I think we've kind of narrowed it down, and I know it's a difficult process, and so, thanks for that. So any questions out there, Donna, before we vote on it? Peter, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I feel comfortable with it. I'll make a motion to approve the amended fee schedule for special event permits.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes three, nothing. All right. Moving on regarding a design overhead clearance advance warning. I know I came to you, Chris, a couple of years ago about trying to put together some idea to try to alleviate this problem that is problematic with trucks getting stuck underneath the 352 bridge. Even though the bridge is not owned by us, and also the fact that we don't own the road, you spent a lot of time trying to come up with solutions. So if you can kind of talk about the design that you're, you're proposing at this point in time?
Sure. So a solution was recently installed in a similar situation on King of Prussia Road in Radnor Township. This past winter, they installed something very similar to a parking garage. When you go into a parking garage, they'll have a, what we call a headache bar, right? Which lets you know that if you hit that bar, you're too tall to go into the garage. It's the same concept. It's on either side of a rail bridge on King of Prussia Road. It's a mast arm design. In fact, we have pictures of the installation on King of Prussia Road. It's essentially a mast arm that hangs down over the road, and if a truck were to hit that hanging sign, it gives a, basically, a physical indication and an audible indication to the driver that they are too tall to go any further and travel under the bridge. The system also has a flashing warning device on the pole to alert truck drivers of the clearance restriction. So this was recently approved and installed. It was led by Radnor Township. I believe they may have received public funding for the project. It was installed this winter. There have been some modifications to it since its installation, but by all accounts, it has been very successful, and I believe the feedback we have received is that since the installation, there have been no incidents of trucks getting stuck under the bridge. So for years, we've had a similar situation on Route 352, south of Route 30, for the Amtrak Bridge that crosses over Route 352. Historically, we will have incidents of trucks that aren't familiar with the area. Perhaps the drivers don't speak English and have a hard time reading the signs, although I'm not sure how you can't really read a number. But in any event, we've had incidents of trucks getting stuck under the bridge. And so this has been a topic of discussion. We have talked about different solutions. This is a fairly simple solution. There are higher-tech solutions that involve technology and laser detection, but, you know, this is probably the lowest-cost solution that would make sense, and it's been an effective solution so far in Radnor Township. So we took an initial review of what this solution might cost. We did a quick cost estimate, came in just shy of $150,000. I think it came in around $146,000. That includes engineering and permitting. Should the township decide to move forward, you have two approaches you can follow. You could certainly, if approved by PennDOT, you could fund this out of your own budget. This is a budgeted item if you choose to move forward. Or what we've discussed with township staff is there is currently an Arlie grant application round that is open. PennDOT will be accepting applications soon. To preserve our right for a grant application, we last week submitted a pre-application scoping form. What will happen is PennDOT will review the pre-app form. If they find the project favorable, they will give us feedback, and that would be perhaps an indication that we could then submit the full grant application. If we don't get positive feedback from PennDOT, we don't have to go any further. Again, to your point, this is a state road and an Amtrak Bridge, and either of these are East Whiteland facilities. You do have the option, under the Arlie grant program, to fully apply for engineering and construction so that there would be no resources taken from the township. So that's where we are. I think the ball is in your court as to whether you want to proceed with the project and then decide how you want to fund it, whether it's something you would fund on your own or fund through a grant.
Chris, is the, is the Arlie grant like, like a lot of the other grants that we're looking for? Your ask is 150, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a full 150 grant?
Arlie is quite typically a fully-funded grant. In other words, you, in almost every case, they will fully fund an Arlie project, because generally, they are lower-cost projects.
And there's also no match requirement on Arlie?
There is a match?
There is no match requirement.
No match, okay.
Yeah. Very often, townships will offer a match just to encourage their chances, but I have seen plenty of applications get approved by PennDOT through Arlie without a match. And again, in this case, you could look at this as though you're solving a problem that you don't own, so, you know, you may be incentivized to not offer a match, and then it's up to PennDOT to decide how they want to respond.
What level of design has to be done in order to prepare and apply for the Arlie?
No, we don't have to do anything else to apply for Arlie, other than put together the grant application, which is actually a very simple grant application. So engineering does not have to commence until you, if, if you choose to apply for Arlie, you can delay any decisions on a proposal, delay any decisions on commencing design, wait to see if you receive an Arlie grant, and then at that point, you know you have the funding in place, and then authorize advancing the project. So really, I think, there's really not much that you're authorizing tonight, if anything.
I assume there's... I assume there's one of those on each side of the bridge.
There is. If you scroll up, you'll see the, the one in the opposing direction.
Right, okay.
And this one's actually an interesting image, so this is looking southbound, and that white sign there actually also provides an indication to the, to the truck driver that should a vehicle strike the bridge, given all the advance warning that's in place, that they would be subject to a fine per township code. So, you know, I thought that was interesting.
Chris Jaeger, could you add a few thoughts on this subject matter?
It definitely is a problem there. It's, it's pretty rudimentary for the money, but we need to do something. I have a couple concerns. You know, I mean, I don't know what happens, like if it hits their windshield, or, you know, there were some problems like that, but I think that they're just going to have to play around with it once it gets up and, you know, determine how it's connected and things like that. So for, like I said, for the money, it seems, I'm thinking a lot of money for, for a headache bar with a couple of lights, but I get it. There, there's a lot of strikes, we get, we get a lot of hits up there, and more backups, you know, trucks that back up that cause problems that we don't even get notified of, but we just notice that there's a problem up there. So if that helps you at all.
Okay. Donna, any comments in public? Since, go ahead, Peter.
A quick question for Chris. Is, what is the bar? Is it metal, plastic? It looks like an I-beam to me.
Yeah, actually, Donna, do you know?
We spoke to Radnor about, you know, to find out what they did wrong. They started out with a metal sign. It caused some damage. They quickly changed over to a plastic pipe that was just painted, just like a parking garage.
Yeah, I guess it can't hurt to apply for the grant and then go from there. If we're successful, then it's, I think it'd be an easy decision. Easier decision. If we don't get the grant, then it's still a somewhat easy decision.
I, I didn't, I didn't envision a six-figure number to, to solve a problem like this. So, I, I would agree that let's, let's apply for the Arley and see where we go from, as a result of that, if that's, if that's acceptable, you gentlemen.
I, I agree with that, yeah. If we could save that cost, that'd be fantastic.
Certainly. Motion made to apply for the Arley grant.
Do you have a second?
Oh, wait, sorry, actually, not to interrupt your motion, but it'll actually be next month, at your next month's meeting. There'll be a resolution, there'll be a resolution before your next month, yeah.
Alright. And Chris, appreciate countless hours we've spoken about it and your effort on it, so. Okay, very good. And on our other big project, we had good news this week, so I'll update you on that. We have a meeting next week that you're going to get invited to. Okay, moving on to public hearings. And I'll turn it over to you.
I'm just going to let our court reporter set up. You good? Okay. The first ordinance, proposed ordinance we have in front of you, as indicated on the agenda, is ordinance number 359 regarding the open space tax referendum. I'm just going to briefly read the legal notice. Notice is hereby given that on May 8th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the East Whiteland Township Municipal Building, located at 209 Conestoga Road, Fraser, PA, the Board of Supervisors of East Whiteland Township during its regularly scheduled public meetings shall consider enacting the following ordinance. This is the title of the ordinance. An ordinance amending the Code of the Township of East Whiteland, Chapter 180, taxation, to establish Article I always have to, four, open space tax and renumber Article Four Certification of Taxes to Article Five, which authorizes a referendum pursuant to the Open Space Lands Acquisition and Preservation Act as amended by Act 153 of 1996. This is 32 PS, Section 5001, et cetera, on the question of the imposition of an additional earned income tax and real estate tax at a specific rate to be imposed to raise revenue to retire indebtedness incurred in purchasing interests in real estate or making acquisitions of real property for purposes of securing open space benefits. The question that will be placed on the ballot at the November election is, do you favor the imposition of a tax on the earned income of township residents at a rate not to exceed 5 one-hundredths of 1% and an increase in the real property tax at a rate not to exceed .45 mils for the purpose of preserving natural resources, maintaining wildlife habitat, protecting environmentally sensitive areas, and providing recreational lands by the Township of East Whiteland to be used to retire indebtedness incurred in purchasing interests in or acquisition of real property for natural resource protection, open space preservation, and public recreation. I know that's a lot. I'm going to mark a series of exhibits, and then we can have Catherine explain a little bit more about this. The exhibits are the B1, the April 18th, 2024 email and letter to the Daily Local News with legal notice and proposed ordinance. B2, the April 2024 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B3, the proof of publication, and B4, the ordinance. And I'll turn it over to Catherine, who's been working on this for some time.
Thank you. So, yeah, as Bernadette just explained, she outlined what the substance is of the ordinance, which is essentially consideration of the ballot language. And so, to explain a little bit more about that process, the ballot language must be set at least 13 weeks prior to the election on which ballot it's going to be placed on, which we're targeting the general election later this year. And so that's really all that's before the board this evening for consideration, and just to be clear, this is just to set the question, this is not to actually impose any taxation ultimately that'll be turned over to the voters of the township. And as a brief aside on this, we're aware that there'll be many questions on what impacts might this have on the average taxpayer, so staff have worked in conjunction with Natural Lands, who's been assisting through this effort to prepare a website along with an FAQ to answer lots of questions that typically come up through this process, and that is live now on the township website and is accessible through the front homepage. And in addition to that, my contact information is listed should folks have any follow-up questions. So at this time, if the board members have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just have a couple. So this is the necessary first step towards implementing an ordinance.
For the ballot question on an open space tax, yes.
And if the voters vote in favor of this, then we still have to take the next step of actually enacting the tax, the amount.
That's right, yeah. The, the amount is set by the ballot language, so the figures that were referenced by Bernadette are the ones that would be fixed. But the, the next steps, because the township's chosen this multifaceted approach of both an earned income tax and a real estate tax, should the ballot measure be successful in November, the Board of Supervisors would then need to adopt two separate ordinances to enable both of those taxes.
The language in the question is an amount imposition of an increase in the property tax at a rate not to exceed .45 mils. So does that mean if this is voted in favor by the residents, it's still the board's discretion whether to go up to the full 4, .45?
Bernadette can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think that the Open Space Tax Act actually says that it's, the, the referendum language shall stipulate what the tax is going to be. I think this is just semantics on a not to exceed. The, the act, I think, actually says that it needs to be what the, what the voters actually vote on.
So this is just lawyering?
I think it's lawyering.
Okay, I understand.
And the current calculations indicate on an annual basis that the median sal, salaries in, in the township would only result in, in something in the neighborhood of $75 a, a year, roughly?
I can walk through the average scenarios if you'd like me to.
I'm just, I was just putting out there as far as the, the annual costs that people can kind of think about.
Yeah, for, so for a resident, an average resident who has an income of $100,000 and also owns a home with a median assessed value of $200,000, which is the median assessed value in the township, they could expect to pay a combined, an amount of roughly $140 a year, and that's the earned income portion and the real estate tax portion total.
Okay.
Which I, I'll just note one thing on that is less than or equal to what other Chester County municipalities have on the books for similar open space tax. There's, there was an analysis done throughout this process to look at what other townships charge in the county for these open space tax initiatives, and the one that's contemplated here is less than several that have more recently been adopted from communities such as West Town that you may have seen.
Also noted, Bernadette, we are one of the very few townships that does not have an open space tax. We're our own little island around a lot of townships that have open space taxes.
Donna, would, does anyone in the audience or anyone online have any questions? Seeing none, at, at this time, I'd ask the board to consider enacting the ordinance, which is, again, I think as Mr. Orlohan indicated, just the first step in setting forth the question on the ballot in November.
I would love to make a motion. I will make a motion. That is to put it on the ballot or approve the ordinance? Thank you. To, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 359 regarding open, the open space tax referendum.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes three, zero.
And this might be on the back of the ballot sometimes, so look on the back.
And please vote.
Right, if you have a mail-in ballot that you are correct, yeah. We have a public, we're going to close the public meeting shortly for a short period of time to do the next special event ordinance, so we're going to read the notice for this. Notice is hereby given that on May 8th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the East Whiteland Township Municipal Building, located at 209 Conestoga Road, Fraser, PA, the Board of Supervisors of East Whiteland Township shall hold a public hearing on, and immediately thereafter at the public meeting, will consider adoption of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance amending the East Whiteland Township Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 200, Article 3, Definitions, to amend the definition of special events and to add new sections, a new section 2096, Special Events, to Article 15, Supplementary Uses. And I'm going to mark a series of exhibits. B1 will be the April 8th, 2024 filing with the Chester County Planning Commission. B2, the April 8th, 2024 email to the East Whiteland Township Planning Commission. B3, the April 15th, 2024 email and letter to the Daily Local News with a legal notice and proposed ordinance. B4, the April 15th, 2024 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B5, the May 2nd, 2024 Chester County Planning Commission Review Letter. B6, the proof of publication, and B7, the ordinance. Just briefly, this was reviewed, I think at least twice by the East Whiteland Township Planning Commission, but we didn't have the minutes available yet from the last planning commission where they reviewed the special events. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Barner.
Thank you. Yeah, nothing too much to add to that. This has been discussed with the board previously. We've tried to keep a pretty simple approach here. Really, the key to this ordinance is that, you know, when somebody submits a permit application, it'll be reviewed by various departments just to make sure that there's no issues. There's references here to let people know that there are other types of permits potentially through the Health Department or otherwise that they would have to obtain. We talked about the fee. So really, nothing much to add other than we have a draft application in the works, and we'll get that finalized and published here so we can start, you know, enforcing this ordinance and coordinating these things a little better going forward.
No, no changes really since our last conversation last, last month, correct?
No, the only changes were, you know, a version or two ago before you looked at it, and that was just to kind of tinker with the total number of days and some, some things like that.
So, we've seen it. Donna, any questions? Public, any questions? I think it's kind of simple. Want to make a motion?
Sure.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll go back to the public meeting, and I'll ask for the motion.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment regarding special event within Section 2096.
Do you have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Section 5, a motion to advertise, John?
Now, we have a few items tonight. The first one's actually a motion to award. We had a bid opening on April 29th for our 2024 paving project. We had five bidders. The low bid was Highway Materials, $581,920. Well within what we expected. We were in the range of $600,000. We were happy to see that number.
Right. I think that's discussed a little of that last month as well, so I think we're you want to make a motion? Got any questions?
I don't think there's any questions. I would be happy to make a motion to award the 2024 paving project bid to Highway Materials for the price of $581,920.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three, oh.
Thank you. The next item is the award of the Warren Avenue Culvert Replacement Project that went to bid on May 1st, and the low bid was to Jurek Inc. for $438,948.
Donna, any questions? Alright, Peter, you want to make another motion?
I just had a quick question. When, when was this work supposed to be done, John? I forget.
Uh, there is, there are two utility poles that have to be relocated, so that's going to drive the start of this project. As soon as we award, we'll get with the contractor, get that process started. Late summer, more than likely.
Okay. Will the Warren Avenue be shut down for periods of time?
Approximately three weeks.
Okay.
So, and we also have to coordinate with Malvern Borough. We've been talking with them too, because they have a project potentially on Old Lincoln going up into the borough. So, language in their contract is, we need to coordinate.
Yeah.
Roads can't be closed at the same time.
Those are arterial roads.
Right.
The, in, the section would be below Spring to Village, we'll say.
Right, it's from the, the stop sign to Old Lancaster up to Spring Road.
Spring, okay. That's, that's another question to have. Thank you.
If you have any more questions, would you like to make a motion?
I could, I could make a motion. I could, I could make a motion toward the Warren Alvert- Warren Avenue Culvert Replacement Project bid to Jurk Incorporated for four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three oh.
My third item is we are asking for approval to advertise for what we're calling twenty twenty-four paving project phase two. This will be three separate roads. It's gonna be the mill and overlay of Warren after this work's complete. We didn't want to include this in that contract because the type of contractor bids that wouldn't be paving it, and we would not get favorable pricing. It's also going to be parts of Spring Valley and parts of Backton Hill Road that are not included in the Aqua work. Aqua, wherever they put pipe, they're gonna do complete base repair and complete overlay. We're gonna pick up the sections that they don't. So, that is, the, it's approximately sixty-seven hundred square yards, but there's quite a bit of base repair on those projects. Dissipate around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. These are all gonna be covered under liquid fuels.
Sounds good.
Peter, as long as you're doing construction, you wanna roll it out here again?
John and I are on the same page here, I think. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve to advertise for the twenty twenty-four Phase Two paving projects.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, I do have one other question. Uh, inquiring minds wanting to know, is there a timeframe for Plainbrook to get repaved?
Yes.
Are we still looking at the thirty-five to forty days out?
The, they're two separate projects. We're walking next week with the contractor for Backton and that whole area for base repair and paving. That should get started first week of June. The Plainbrook started about a month later. They're gonna be back on Plainbrook Road after school's out to finish the pipe, and they're gonna be off of there before school opens again. They're not gonna be done till September-ish. It'll be, they'll get the base repair this year. It'll be much better, but we might not get the overlay.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'll turn it over to Zach for planning and development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the first item here is the consideration to authorize staff and the solicitor, or just the solicitor in this case, to prepare a resolution for the following developments. First is the Gray Star Apartments and the Great Valley Corporates Center. This is submitted as a, um, preliminary slash final plan. I believe the applicant's attorney and consultants are here to sort of walk through where the plan stands and answer any questions the board may have.
Thanks, Zach. Good evening, board members. Lou Calagreco representing Gray Star Development. Um, as Zach pointed out, we've, we're seeking preliminary final plan recommendation. The Planning Commission has unanimously, oh, thank you, has endorsed, uh, that request. We decided to spend a lot more time before the Planning Commission at the suggestion of staff than we ordinarily would have done. So, we believe the plans, at least by the time that you're ready to finally vote on these plans in June. My God, they should be, they should be very clean by that time. We've gotten the major planning issues out of the way. But what I'd like to do now is, 'cause you probably forget, you haven't seen this plan since you approved the master plan, do a real brief run-through of what, what it looks like, maybe remind you of what it was that you saw probably six months ago. So, if we can punch up the, the plan on the, on the screen, I'm gonna ask Paul Leopard our planner just to walk through the current, uh, the current iteration of the plan. It's all yours, Paul.
My name is Paul Leopard. I'm principal with, uh, Nave Newell. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I think, uh, it's been a little while since we've had the opportunity to speak with the board and share the evolution of the plan. Um, what you're seeing in front of you right now is what we refer to as the amended master plan. It's, uh, virtually identical to what the board saw, um, back in the fall. You recall the, the project, whoops? Apartment portion of the project is approximately fifteen acres of, of ground. Uh, if you recall the prior master plan, you may have seen a staggered building or, um, a stepped building, um, approach, um, based on the ongoing study and due diligence with respect to, thank you, Zach. That would have been the prior, um, study where, uh, the market rate and the qualified, the age qualified, which is in the center of the screen, uh, had two buildings, a shared central drive, um, and the buildings stepped down the, the landscape. As we studied the site, um, we became aware that we needed to revisit, um, the, uh, the building form, particularly for the, uh, age qualified, um, in order to better keep with some of the, um, constraints that we noted, uh, with the property. Mostly, um, you'll see that the phase one portion, market rate? Two hundred and sixty, uh, seven, um, apartments, uh, with a hundred and thirty-four in the... Zach, can I ask you to switch to the next slide, which is, uh, the, the kind of the update?
Hey, Paul, not to cut you off, can you just, could you, would you mind taking the mic with you as you wander?
Thank you. There we go. All right. Thank you, folks. Uh, so the building form has changed a little bit, again, in response to some of the site considerations, namely, um, uh, balancing our earthwork, um, and what we, uh, realized that we wanted to, to, to study and explore and vet it out, which is to provide a podium-style building for the hundred and thirty-four, uh, age-qualified apartments on the right-hand side with parking towards the north, which is, uh, planned right, and, um, a podium parking facility, um, which fronts towards the lap road extension and our stormwater facility, and then the market rate building is where the big phase one label is, and that's again, the two hundred and sixty-seven, um, market rate apartments. Pardon me?
Did you say podium parking?
Yes, there's podium park-
Explain that? Thanks.
Sure.
I don't, I've never heard that one before.
Okay, so, um, podium parking or tuck-under parking. So, there's a level of parking. Bear with me here. Podium Drive. Interesting. The po- yeah, the podium entrance is off of, uh, Old Moore Hall Road. The entrance is here. And through the extent of the building from north to south, uh, is underground parking, so, um, we're able to accommodate additional covered parking here and field parking, uh, for the required, um, uh, parking for the apartments. And so, it's, it's, uh, structured parking with the building sitting on top. Um, just pointing out on, again, the master plan is a phased master plan. Uh, phase two is a placeholder on the upper right-hand side of the plan. I'm not sure if you're able to zoom out a little bit, Zach. Uh, again, this is a placeholder for what's been programmed, um, um, about three hundred thousand square feet of, of office and a structured parking deck with, again, of, um, first floor, um, retail suites or commercial suites fronting, um, Great Valley Parkway. And then there's a linear park component that's a placeholder, um, along Great Valley Parkway, and then the, again, the continued use for, uh, the Fox Barn at twenty-nine, um, uh, towards the rear. So, they will be featured prominently on the entrance drive, and so that's the, the master plan.
Question, the linear park, um, that's a temporary linear park, correct?
Correct, and there will be a temp- as part of the improvement concurrent with Gray Star, PSDC will install a temporary linear park, um, or, or trail, which will follow, um, uh, Great Valley Parkway and, um, and then we're still working out the kinks relative to, uh, the portion that's on Route twenty-nine. It may go off-road for a segment there, but that will be a, again, a continuation of the, of the trail. But it would be temporary, and then when phase two comes online, it would be fully, uh, designed and, and implemented at that point.
What, what could that in phase two look like? I mean, as, as you look at the picture, it's a skinny, long line of land.
So, um, I think the best way to maybe look at what it might look like is, again, we've started the design vernacular for the linear park as part of the Gray Star, uh, project. Uh, I think a portion of it, again, is gonna be temporary, so there isn't gonna be a whole lot of improve- improvement at this point, but the blacktop, uh, for a bike trail and pedestrian way will be provided as part of the temporary. I can show you what I would hope the vision would be, but that would be as part of phase two, so it would be subject to, uh, other project planning. Not trying to be coy, but it's consistent what, yeah.
What, what, what could it, what could it become?
I can show, I can show you what we're visioning for the multimodular trail.
I think there might just be, need to be a point of clarification here. The, what Paul's talking about currently is that in phase two, when the other portion of the site develops, there'll be sort of a meandering path. Linear parks sort of similar but different than what we're talking about for phase one. What, sort of the interim piece is that before phase two is developed, there'll be a sort of an asphalt path that would connect from Route twenty-nine, you know, along Great Valley Parkway. That's the interim piece relative to linear park in phase two. What you might be asking is, from an interim standpoint, is this hilltop area, which I'm, I think Paul will likely get to as the...
Sure.
Is that what you were looking to, for clarification on?
Yeah, i- it is. It is.
Yeah, we've, we can, or the slides through. That's simply the site plan. All right, so this is the illustrative site plan for phase one. Multifamily market rate is on the left, active adult is on the center and right, and the, um, what we refer to is either the point or the meadow is, um, a portion of the site that, or ownership isn't clear on what, and what they want to be doing with that, if anything, and so for the interim, it's gonna be held in, in terms of a, uh, a, a grass meadow with a turf, a grass turf walkway. That, that trail that's shown, um, at the point is, again, gonna be turf. It's not intended to be sidewalk. And then the expectation is that that's gonna be a planted, uh, perennial meadow. And there's some other imagery that I think, uh, reflects what the planning concept is going to be. Not sure if that's on the next slide. There we go. So, that's the, that's the concept and the inspiration for the upper, uh, hilltop. Again, we'll have, um, a grass meadow with perennial wildflowers, mixes of, of grass, and then turf grass that can be cut to maintain the trail, and so it becomes, uh, you know, a nice, uh, amenity um, that provides the flexibility of some, um, recreation utilization, uh, until it's determined what it wants to be, if anything. But that's the intention, uh, in terms of, uh, phase one, for the, for the point.
Next slide. Anything, Paul? This is, this is about the phase two building. I was gonna start down a road on that, if you will. Or path. Maybe a grass path.
Yeah, if you recall, where, where the, the meadow sidewalks are, are shown is where there's an existing, uh, cluster of two buildings and a central parking court, which are relic from, uh, the old farm complex, and then, I think, in the eighties, one of the buildings was added, added later, and then they were all refinished on the exterior. But they will be demolished and the blacktop will be taken up and the site will be regraded to clean up because I think it's not presenting the best uh, front door for the project, so we wanna make that look nice and it presents a, a nice opportunity.
What's the sequencing of the road improvements?
So, Eric, would you like to talk about the road improvements?
Good evening. Eric Austin, Chuck with Traffic Planning and Design. Uh, can we go back to that plan, Zach? Excuse me.
Eric, would you like to just bring up the overall?
Yeah, the overall plan is, is fine.
I think I have the traffic plans as well.
Well, that, that one works. Um, so, well, actually, the, the, uh, overall plan, I think, uh, which shows Great Valley Parkway as well, but talk about this one. Uh, yeah. So, as part of the phase one of the development, um, and what we're here for in land development, the lap road extension is gonna be constructed from Old Moore Hall Road on the plan north, to plan south and come in opposite Valley Creek Park. The driveway for that, uh, will also be, uh, installing a traffic signal at that location and providing the pedestrian connectivity over to the park, uh, so that people can access that from not only, you know, this development, but also to the north, uh, along Great Valley Parkway with the, the pedestrian connectivity that's, that's proposed. Uh, additionally, we are doing some modifications to the Great Valley Parkway, uh, intersection with Route twenty-nine. Uh, essentially there, uh, on the western side of that road, there's a, there's a median there that dictates that you have to have a signal phasing in place such that left turns don't go at the same time. So, in coordination with Pendot and the Township Traffic Engineer, uh, we're making some modifications to that approach such that we can, um, get some more capacity for, for vehicles to pass through that intersection. Uh, so that will be done as part of phase one as well.
Is there a Route twenty-nine widening at some point? Does that come with phase two?
That's with phase two, yes. So, uh, phase two has the, uh, Route twenty-nine widening essentially from south of Great Valley Parkway up through, um, north of Flat Road or South Atwater Drive to connect into, yeah, so as part of that, it will essentially be, as you're traveling northbound, you'll have three lanes that will drop as the right turn lane at the turnpike.
Okay.
And similarly, southbound, uh, there's a third lane that starts just north of Great Valley Parkway and drops south of Great Valley Parkway. That, uh, southbound through lane will be extended to the north, north of Flat Road, so that third through lane will start at that point.
Okay. I think my question was for Lou in regards to phase two. Would the a- applicant be willing to deed restrict the phase two to be, uh, what it is proposed to be, commercial?
I don't know about deed restriction. I think under the terms of the ordinance and the master plan approval, it can't be more residential because the district has a max, if that's where you're getting to.
Well, I mean, we've, we've approved other sites that was supposed to be one and the other not too long ago. And it's just switched back to all residential, so I'm looking to not have that history repeat itself.
No, I hear you. Uh, ba- base, look, I can check. I mean, I, the, that's not a decision that Gray Star can make. That's with PSDC, you know, Philadelphia Suburban, Mark Nicoletti. He's gonna retain ownership of phase two where he's now showing the R and D building. Under the matrix for the master plan, the point I was getting to is that in order for that to be, and if residential is what it doesn't wanna be, if, if, if that's the goal here to, it can't be residential based on the ratio percentages of the master plan ordinance, of the overlay ordinance. There's only a certain percentage of the project that can be residential, and you're seeing it right here. So, the rest of it by default has to be either retail, has to be either office, R and D. I guess it could be industrial, though I don't think industrial's a use. I'd, I'd have to check myself on that. I'm not sure that this district allows for industrial, so the use limitations are fairly, uh, cert- once this plan gets approved, they're, they're fairly cast unless you, the board, decide in the future to change the zoning or to change what can go on there.
Through special condition?
Yeah.
Which...
Well, you'd have to approve it. You, I mean, I'm sure Bernadette can advise you on that, uh, but the master plan calls it-
That's why I'm seeking the deed restriction, Lou.
Yeah, it's, it's tough to, look, just as a general matter of real estate law, it's tough to encumber properties with deed restrictions because we all are very smart- tough to encumber properties with deed restrictions because we all are very smart in this room tonight. We could be very dumb 10 years from now.
Absolutely. And I don't know who's going to be sitting here 10 years from now, but I know what I want 10 years from now.
God knows what I'll want 10 years from now, but...
Who knows?
Um, I, I hear what you're saying and look, that can be run off the flagpole internally. I can't, PSDC's not here tonight, I can't say that. But I, I will say this and back, backdrop it with Bernadette or anybody, that I think you have the protections you need. Your, your own worst enemy, if you decide to change the zoning in the future to something that would allow what you don't want, you will control that. Maybe you on another board, I guess, would control that.
Exactly my point.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I can check on that.
Please.
Any idea what the split of the residential units are between studio ones, twos, and threes? If any?
Three numbers. I know there's 400 total. By, I, I can buy time here with idle information about the project. I know there's 13 three-bedroom units because that was a topic of discussion for four months before the planning commission.
That's a hangup of mine as well, the three-bedroom units.
Well, I mean, the master plan approval allows for it. It says we can't exceed 13 three-bedroom units, so that's what we've done. It's, i- if the issue is, is school-aged children, which I think would be the only issue.
That is the issue.
It's negligible on the impact in the school district. And this township and West Whiteland Township and wherever these new apartment houses have been built, there's just data and data and data of empirical information regarding how few schoolchildren these complexes generate. So when you compare it to what's being dropped to the bottom line of the Great Valley School District financially, you know, you're looking in the neighborhood of $2 million with the only apartment complex that I'm aware of in the region, except for in King of Prussia, that has voluntarily restricted, you know, 130, 135 of its units to no children at all. That's, that's a pretty bold experiment, but, so...
It, it sounds great and I, I very much do appreciate, I wish the percentage was the flip of what it is, but it's not, it's not my property to develop. But I, I do know the, I do feel and I do participate, listen into the school district meetings and know the pressures that they're under. And I can only do my due diligence in my position to try to stave off the numbers of incoming students as I can almost guarantee every one of those three-bedroom units is going to put at least one to two kids in the school district.
Well, you know, that may be, and we have the fiscal and I can look at it if there's a break here, we have a projection of what it is. And these projections, again, I'm not selling the snake oil here, the, these projections are taken right from the school district's own numbers. And I don't think it would be nine children, I think it's less than that. But more importantly, um, it's not the apartment houses, as you know, that are generating children, it's every other dwelling type but apartment houses. It's townhouses, it's single-family detached. Those are your, those are your real generators to the school district. These projects, as I said, they drop millions of dollars to the school district with very little expense coming the other way. So, again, we did submit a fiscal, I think it's been vetted by the township. I think the township has its own numbers on apartments and schoolchildren and whatnot. So I understand, I, I understand the issue.
I hear everything you're saying, Lou. I've absolutely seen those numbers, but my stance is my stance there.
Hundred, thank you, Lou. There are 161 bedroom studio apartments, uh, 94 two-bedroom apartments and 13 three-bedroom apartments in the market rate building. That should total up to, um, 267 units. And then for the age-qualified, there are 74 one-bedroom studios and 59 two-bedrooms. And that is a total of 133 units.
I do want to add too that, I mean, part of what's been lost, maybe hasn't been lost, but one of the reasons we spent so much time with the planning commission is that virtually every comment that we've received regarding redesign of the plan or, you know, reconfiguring of the buildings, whatnot, has come as a suggestion a lot from your own consultants, the issue of podium parking, where you see that green area that we showed you before, that was asphalt under the old plan. That was a surface parking lot. It was suggested by Tom Cometta that we take a look at podium parking, you know, parking under the building, which resulted, among other things, in the layout that you see here. There was an awful lot of talk about interconnectivity to the park across the street. Uh, those plans are, uh, before PennDOT now in design review. Uh, one of the other things I wanted to bring up is with a lot of discussion about tree replacement, and we have proposed at, with the endorsement of the planning commission, the unanimous endorsement of the commission and staff, that there are approximately 187 trees, if I have that number correct, 88, which we could probably find someplace on this site to squeeze them in. But it was suggested to us that it may be a better use to monetize those trees and apply that towards a riparian buffer project that the township is presently undergoing with the Valley Creek on the other side of 29. And we got no issue with that. It, it makes it much more practical. We think it makes, first of all, we think this site has a ton of trees on it as proposed. So, again, we think that's just win-win. What that number is, be up to the consultants to figure out what a tree costs and how that gets monetized, but we're on board with that. And then the township can use it for whatever this, this scheme is they have for, you know, replanning the riparian buffer.
Zach, could, could you kind of, we had talked today about maybe some three type of concerns you, you had existing right now.
Yeah, I guess a question would be, was there more to your presentation, Paul, that you wanted to walk through with any of the other site aspects?
A couple of, of just, I think, other amenities that I would want to point out to benefit the board, just real quickly in terms of the overall plan. Again, Lou, Lou mentioned the connectivity aspects of the project. And so we're implementing the strategies per the master plan. So there's a linear park, which, um, is proposed along the Route 29, um, which will provide an opportunity for both pedestrian and cyclists. Uh, Lou also mentioned, as did Eric, the pedestrian connection at the signalized intersection so that residents in the community that may be getting to the site location through other pedestrian networks have direct access to the park. Similarly, that multimodal trail is extending up the north side of the lap road extension, so on the right-hand side as you're looking at the site plan. And, um, on all, all point ADA intersection is going to be improved at the lap road and Old Moore Hall Road extension. Notwithstanding, uh, bike trails in both the northbound and southbound direction will be, um, provided along Old Moore Hall Road, along with sidewalks throughout the community. So it's both a walkable community and, uh, and again, a play community where we're accommodating and implementing the strategies of the township's multimodal trail plan, um, with the incorporation of the, uh, linear park. With respect to the linear park, you can see some of the patchwork of, of, of color along, um, Route 29. What that represents is a series of panels of turf and perennials, turf, perennials, tree canopy, um, so that there's a really, uh, quite nice, um, presence, uh, for folks that are not only, uh, on the trail, but who are traveling. Um, and we, we decided to kind of take cues from other similar projects like the BID projects that are happening in King of Prussia, where we're using really tolerant perennials and grasses that can, uh, handle that, um, environment, both dry and a lot of reflective heat, um, but are also affordable. And, and so if they can translate to other projects in the township, um, you know, should that be desired. There are also a series of pedestrian, um, amenities that have been incorporated into the park. There are two gateways on the opposing corners at the north or the west side of the lap road extension towards the top of the sheet, um, both the left and the right-hand side of the road, which kind of help provide gateway, um, um, and kind of monumentation features of arrival for, uh, residents that are, are either going to the active adult driveway or the market rate, uh, drive. Uh, there is also towards the, south of the lap road extension, on the south side of the active adult building, you can see kind of a, a finger of green. Well, that, that happens to also be a fire access drive, but that's also going to be incorporated into a, um, a, oops, uh, right-hand side, lower corner of the active bolt, left-hand corner. Correct. Uh, that's going to be an outdoor, um, amenity area for residents. Um, we're going to reserve a handful of parking spaces for, um, the incorporation of some picnic tables and some plant, you know, some planting tables for a community garden club. Um, and so that kind of knits into the, into the frap, the fabric of, of the overall community. So we've really made efforts to kind of, as, as Mr. Cometa mentioned in some of his dialogue with us, uh, you know, a tissue, a fabric that is knitting the, uh, landscape plan with the community. And so, um, we're, we're excited about what that presents, not only for the residents, but for the community as whole. And I think with that, I've kind of, yeah, there may be some other vignettes of some of that imagery, Zach. So that's the seating area that we were talking about with the raised planners off to the left-hand side. That green panel below the little rectangle boxes is the, um, fire lane that we talked about. So we're going to convert some pavement in short term for some green space and hold that in reserve. And the fire access kind of doubles with the sidewalk area. Then we'll have some tree grove and some, um, some, um, picnic tables beneath it. Uh, I think there's another slide that kind of gives a little bit of imagery on what we think that looks like on the next slide. So that's, you know, the raised planner concept, the, the tree canopy with seating areas, the monument wall that we see on the top, uh, portion of that curved retaining wall with the purple, uh, plants planted in it. Uh, so we'll have a panel, a signage panel above the wall. And then we'll be looking to provide some accent, um, lights, um, in that, in that landscape to help, help it pop. But, um, that's a signage panel that's, um, again, um, proposed, that, that's kind of what it will look like from the Route 29 side if you're looking at it. Next slide. These are the concepts for the two opposing gateways on the, uh, west side of the lap road extension. Uh, we have the market rate on the right-hand side corner and the age-qualified corner on the left hand. And so we're kind of knitting the pedestrian crossings with some seating opportunities at the entrance, at the entrance. So again, there's no signage at these locations, but the brown element is kind of a curved seating bench. And if you go to the next slide, it shows some design imagery there. In the middle panel, uh, of, on the left-hand side, you can see the curved wooden style bench that's contemplated. Again, I mentioned the mix of grasses and perennials in terms of the planning scheme for the paneling. And then again, the uplift, uh, landscape elements to again, help accentuate and make those areas pot, as, area of interest.
Maybe, Paul, so I know there's a couple more here. I'm sure the board is interested in reviewing these in more detail. I think certainly I don't want to cut that off. I guess I just wanted to maybe get back to Scott's question about maybe outstanding items. There's a, there's obviously cleanup in the review letters, um, not so much from the Arrow and the Civil and the Stormwater side. Um, there are some items in the McMahon letter regarding the, um, some of the internal improvements. A lot of the, I'll say the traffic improvements, the ones that we're probably like most fixated on because of how this project has evolved. That submission to PennDOT was just recently made. So those, a lot of those improvements are kind of up to them, but with our review and comment. I guess what I just wanted to focus on is sort of where the linear park stands. So there's these series of gateways that Paul walked through. There's other aspects of that, the signage, everything that we're seeing so far looks great. The question is whether it's, really meets the linear park component of the design guidelines. So obviously their focus the last several months has been on getting the site design, given some of the constraints they encountered. Obviously, that puts this linear park component like sort of on the sidelines while they refine the rest. Just based on my interpretation of the guidelines and where things are at, I think the linear park component of it is still, needs further refinement. Um, I know it's limited space. I think everything they have provided is great. We should talk about the medians. We've been talking about vegetated versus concrete, those types of things. But I still feel like the linear park in and of itself, outside of the individual gateway areas, is still not really what was envisioned by the ordinance. And we've talked about that extensively with their team. So that's, to me, that is, though it seems like a detail, it's part of the plan and it was part of the ordinance, so it, I think it needs further refinement before it's ready for action by the board.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that and I, I, this is me speaking on my own here, obviously, that, I, I think the letters could be cleaned up a lot more. I have questions regarding the street widths as well, that, I mean, a lot of the Arrow letters just acknowledged, acknowledged, acknowledged. And, uh, it, I, it's just, it's not cleaned up enough for me yet to... There's too many open-ended things that Zach is, I guess, kind of dancing around.
I'm a great dancer.
As far as refinement of the linear park, have any specific, specifics been recommended? Or is it just doesn't look right or, because it doesn't look right yet?
Yeah, I mean, admittedly, it's a little bit of both. The design guidelines were written intentionally, you know, sort of in consultation with the applicant to make some level of flexibility. I think what was envisioned in there, some of the inspirational images, some of the, sort of the concept plans versus what's proposed now or not, I wouldn't say they're quite aligned. We have talked, there's some, I would say a handful of specifics that are in the Cometta letter, which I think are a good start. Part of this, as much as anything, is the design guidelines call for decorative crossings. So not just, you know, crosswalks, but things that are a little more welcoming, like stamped concrete and things like that. That all needs to be reviewed, sort of as, as part of this process, but also then approved by PennDOT. What I'm, what I've seen so far, maybe not all of those details are refined on even this component of it, and then also need to be reflected then in the PennDOT aspect, which I know is ongoing. My suggestion, if, to the extent that there is one, given the limited area to work with here, is making the crossing of Route 29 into the park as safe, as welcoming, as functional and attractive as possible. That to me, again, given the constraints, is the best opportunity. Um, but I just don't think we're there in terms of the clarity on that, refining the design. There's, I think there's some things that need to be improved in that regard.
To follow, to follow that, I would say I'm, I'm very excited for this project and its possibilities, but the, uh, the open-ended stuff is, is holding me up tonight.
Here's what I suggested, Peter, too, and maybe we can, you know, slice the baby here, just to keep the project moving forward. The only reason that, you know, time kills all projects and in this economy, time kills many projects, just with the interest rate volatility and the markets being what they are. So what I would hope we could do, because I have a feeling that if the board would, not ask, obviously not ask for any approval tonight, I, I knew that when I walked in the door. But I do believe that Bernadette needs to get started because there's going to be conditions in the drafting and condition, exchange of conditions. If, if you could authorize the attorneys to work on that end of it while the professionals are still working on the refinement of it, I would just like to burn the candle at both ends. If we're ready in June, we're ready. If we're not ready in June, then it'll be July. But I want to, I want to try and pull out all the stops to see if we can't make this work. I think Zach would agree that the progress that has been made to date, based on what was originally proposed for the linear park and other things, has probably increased tenfold and can increase again. And I admit that that process probably isn't fully baked just yet. But I'm willing to bet... But I'm willing to bet, I might lose money, but I'm willing to bet that it will be fully baked by June. And if it's not fully baked, you'll tell me I'm half-baked and it'll go back to July. We're not, I just want authorization for us to start talking about potential conditions, because that could be an exercise in and of itself while the professionals do their thing with parks and road crossings and stamped concrete. That's all.
Yeah, I think the benefit of that, too, is it will narrow what the remaining issues are.
That's right.
I would think, right?
Yeah, hopefully supportive of what he's proposing. Yeah, I think there's going to be a fair amount of conditions that just, some of them will be just reflecting what's on the plans, but the list will likely be long. So I think a head start is a good idea.
Yeah, I'm fine with, with moving forward. It's not ready right now, so I'm okay with moving forward with both sides talking.
Excellent.
Trying to rectify, that's my opinion.
With drafting.
Yeah.
Right.
You okay with that, Bernadette?
Yeah, I had one quick question. On the hilltop area that's shown as the meadow, is that shown, is there a note somewhere on the plan or something like that?
It is. It's shown on the plan.
Yeah, that says that this area may be later...
It says temporary, or it says something like that, but I'm sure you'll put that in your conditions. That can better be fleshed out through a narrative and the conditions, I think. It could be permanent. If nobody comes along, it's not a whole lot of developable area, to tell you the truth. And given the constraints that we found out about it just during this exercise, I don't want to say it will be permanent, but it's going to have to be a pretty expensive user who comes along and wants to develop that piece of property.
Well, with so many limitations, why don't we just take, check that off?
You know how that goes, Scott. I mean, it's, I'll be shot if I go back and say that. It's, it's just, it's open to be discussed in the future. There's so little, and I keep coming back to this, there's, the plan has maxed out. If you take Mark Nicoletti's proposal, you know, for the R and D, there's really not a whole lot under the ordinance, you know, under the coverage allowances and everything. There's a little bit, but nobody's refined that, nobody's looked at it. It's, for now, it's going to be ugly if we leave it the way it is. I think it's going to be a raised building and it's going to be concrete or something over there. So we just want to rip it up, plant meadow grass, and we'll see what happens down the road. Maybe nothing. But thank you for at least entertaining this tonight. I do think that this client has exhibited a willingness to, you know, pull out most of the stops. I'll never say all the stops, but, you know, and the staff has been excellent. The turnaround on comments has been very quick. Zach probably doesn't want to pick up the phone when he sees our numbers on the dial, but he does deliver and he does get the consultants to deliver very rapid turnaround, which is very much appreciated. So we'll see you in June, hopefully. That's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Start drafting.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Just need a motion then for the drafting of the resolution.
I'll see you guys later.
Yeah, we would just need a motion then for, to authorize the drafting.
Lou, and I think at some point, I think we may need an extension on the...
Yeah, I think you're to the middle end of June. The next one is the opposite. But if it's not ready in June, certainly it's...
The extension to July. I mean, it's...
I'd like to revisit that before we get too close to the deadline, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we're cognizant of the fact it's holiday, you know, Memorial Day, you probably lose four or five days. So we know how that, that whole thing goes.
I'm sorry, Peter, you were asking? No.
Yes, so I'll make a motion to authorize solicitor to begin drafting a resolution for the Gray Star development.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to bore you with the next application, too. Go ahead, Zach.
Where's Jack?
Oh. This next application is for what we all have referred to as the data center. I think you all know where it is. Jack will orient you and briefly run through what the quote "data center" has evolved into. It's been a project five years in the planning. It's been to the zoning board a few times, but the current plan is the final product. We're here looking for a preliminary plan. Again, a recommendation to have Bernadette prepare a resolution, just like the prior application. As soon as it goes up on the screen, I'll have Zach, or Jack rather, walk you through it. I will tell you that in the appearances that we had before the Planning Commission, and we sort of take our cue from the questions that are raised at the commission and by residents at the Planning Commission as to what they deem important. And I will say that probably 95% of the inquiries on this project dealt with sound and potential sound emanation from these buildings. The client has worked with its own sound consultant for a number of months, and we are confident that we can fit within the confines of the township's sound vibration ordinance, which was enacted, I guess, last year. And I know the township has backstopped that with an analysis by its own traffic consultant who supports, who made additional recommendations to our consultant about an additional sound wall, which we added to the plan to sort of doubly ensure that the sound emanating from this project would be minimal at best. And if questions come up about that, I believe the township's sound consultant is in the audience. But I was very pleased at the receptivity that our plan received from the Planning Commission on that issue regarding sound. There were very few other questions, because when you get right down to it from a land development, I'm sorry.
In fact, I just wanted to follow up with the sound discussion that was had at the Planning Commission. I haven't discussed this with the board for obvious reasons. I was at the Planning Commission meeting and they seem to have gone above and beyond for reducing sound, using sound dampening ways to keep sound to, I don't think you will ever hear it, Rich, coming in or out of Malvern Hunt. That would be my take from the meetings.
I agree, and it sounds to me like the lawn mowers from Malvern Hunt may be louder than the generators from the, from the data center.
Twice, if not three times as loud.
There you go. But from a land development perspective, and Zach can, I keep saying Zach, Jack, maybe Jack and Zach can walk you through what this plan is, Jack can do it first, but it's not a complex land development plan. It's two buildings. It's very limited parking. The projected employee count, I think here, is probably about 50 at a time of, you know, max occupancy. So you probably couldn't have a less, you probably couldn't have a lesser use as pertains to traffic generation. But with that said, it is a land development application, and I do think, Jack, if you could walk the board through the fundamentals of the plan, the size of the buildings, and maybe the landscaping that's proposed.
Good evening, Jack Robbins, here from JMR Engineering. Tonight, yeah, I'm going to give you an overview and you can ask any questions you have regarding this. Just going back to the beginning, you recall this was a retirement facility many years ago, and we had as many as 850 units here, and there was a stormwater basin in West Whiteland Township. The land hasn't changed a whole lot, other than, this is a completely different concept, obviously. There is a basin in the same exact location in West Whiteland Township. And just to kind of put that matter at rest, that's actually already been approved by West Whiteland Township and designed, and reviewed by Arrow as well, but West Whiteland has also reviewed and approved it. So when we came to you a couple of years ago, we had two 500,000 square foot buildings, and you may or may not recall that. So they were, in total, was 1 million square feet on the footprint. Fast forward to now, we have modified our design and with, based on the market and many other factors, and these buildings are half of that. So these are 250,000 square foot footprint buildings, each two stories with the basement. What the basement is the kind of the new thing. The basement is obviously subsurface, and that will house a lot of the things that we had outside before. So they are two-story buildings with a basement, each 250,000 square feet in the footprint, which means they're each 500,000 square feet with two stories. And then add the two together, 1 million square feet total for the, for the, for the site. Each of the buildings is served through Swedesford Road. There is essentially a figure eight drive aisle around the whole site. The center of the site actually has two, even though it's, because the buildings are kind of far apart. So you have drive-out access that's nearby around each building. The very rear of the buildings shows a loading dock that you'll see. And behind those loading docks, you'll see like two, what looks like rocky rectangles up against the Pico property. And those are the substations, they have to do with the electrical needs of the site. As you are probably also aware that, you know, this is up against the Pico site, so we can have the power. There is an auxiliary access that will be for private use and emergency access use, which is the Bacton Hill Road access, South Bacton Hill Road access. And that's been there for many years. Actually, it has been one of the main accesses during construction and when it was foot-mineral years ago. So that access has been there for a very long time and will remain, but be used for only emergency use or private use only. The main entrance will be through what is now, you know, the township property right off of Swedesford Road. In terms of landscaping, we've worked with a landscape consultant. There's a ordinance that actually I'm not familiar with having to design by, and that came up on this site. There's a vacant lot ordinance. For every 500, yeah, for every 5,000 square feet of face, you need to provide a tree, open space. So this was, this, as you're familiar, probably are familiar with this site, it's quite open. There's really, there are some piles of dirt, you'd probably know, but it's an open site. What we did was we surveyed the trees that are, that are there to get credit for those. And there are actually a fair amount, believe it or not, to the south. We are, we have a 500 and some, 534 trees, I think exactly, to the south. So we are buffered quite a bit between 202 and the Pico property. You can imagine, though, the north is really the, probably the main side of the site that we would like to buffer. But what we've done is we've taken all the trees that were required and located them there, and that was part of a lot of the discussion with consultants, et cetera. So we have 442 trees proposed on township property. Now, that doesn't even count the 95 trees that we have throughout the site for parking lots, et cetera. But those are more just ornamental and probably won't even be seen from Swedesford Road. So the main thrust is to put 442 trees on that, on the sites that used to have the lagoons. And actually, there are some renderings we do have. Zach, if you wanted to, I'm up there. This is just views from Swedesford Road that we had, and this is with our trees. I know there's been discussion of a, you know, of a grant of potentially more trees, which actually would probably be double the number of trees. This is the conservative amount of trees. This is the trees that will, that have to be implemented by ordinance that we have designed.
And this is one of the designs that the Temple students had, or not?
This is not. So the Temple students would be double this. This is what is designed.
Without that, and we didn't want to show the whole thing because we thought it was a, you know, promising more than we might deliver. This is what we would deliver under the ordinance.
Okay.
If you're looking at those, using the existing trees as well.
Charlie, you really have to have the microphone for anybody else.
I'm sorry, I'm Charles Levine, and I'm with Greenfig. And what I was saying was that the trees are the number of trees that we are required under the ordinance, and we are going ahead with the grant request, and it's almost finished, and we'll provide that to the township. We've met with them, and those will add another thousand, it's roughly 1,000 trees, another 500 or so trees in there. And that's the temple plan.
And actually, this was done with the previous amount of trees, with back and forth with the landscape consultant. We're adding 95 more, but that's kind of minor. I think the important thrust is you're not going to be able to see these buildings, at least very, it'll be very difficult to see. The buildings are not as high as I think we had them originally. With back, way back with Whiteland Village, we had 55 to 60-foot buildings. These are coming in the low 40 range, like 43 feet. So, and that's partly due to the basements. The basements are going to be, are underground. It's a 20-foot basement. So this isn't a small basement. It's going to be a deep basement, and then it's going to be the house, like I said, a lot of these, a lot of the things that actually that were considered something that would produce noise. So, yeah, and I think Dr. Everbach's here tonight, if you wanted to hear from him. But there's, on top of, you know, putting things in the basement to decrease noise, there is also sound walls outside that will look like the building, the side, but they will block the sound coming from the cooling towers. And that was kind of put in as an extra measure. The other thing to note, I think, on the sound, I think is worth noting that we did the Planning Commission, is that we meet the code, if not below the code, at the property line. The property line is really, is where the trail is now. So where actual homes are, are much further than the trail. So, you know, you could have a, you could have a home that's really right by the trail and still meet code, but the homes are actually much further. So I think there are very, there's a lot of, like they say, belt and suspenders built into this. I think, yeah, if you wanted to hear from Dr. Everbach, obviously he's here. Any other questions you have for me? I'm trying to think if I've missed anything. There are a few waivers, I could go over them if you'd like as well.
You mentioned sound walls. Sound walls on the top of the building?
No.
Or on the ground?
They'll flank, they'll flank the outside of each building. So it'll look like the buildings are wider than they actually are. So if you go back to the plan view, Zach, so you see to the right and to the left, the outside of the buildings, there's these little squares. They're cooling towers. So there's a, there's a baffle wall that, it's almost like a rubberized wall that sits there that will block the sound. It'll appear like it's the building, but it's not.
I do have one, one question as I was looking at the picture in the background. Just because of the recent incident with some birds running into, into buildings and the glare coming from windowed facade buildings, what have you thought of that the facades are going to look like? Is it all glassware, or how is it designed?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Hines. I'm one of the principals with 1547 Critical Systems Realty. We develop, own, and operate data centers nationally. The facade of the building, there'll be tilt-up buildings, so there'll be a very small percentage of glazing on the building. Is there a better rendering that I thought Michelle had? So as you can see, it's a very small percentage of glazing.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Charlie, you have to take the microphone. You're not getting...
On the microwave towers, if the buildings now are at the low to mid 40-feet range, I forget how tall are the microwave towers? They're much taller, I know, but...
The towers, yeah, that we show in the plan right now, I think we had zoning relief for. I think we showed them as a hundred, we showed them on the plan that are permitted to 150 feet. Whether they actually are or not, that's...
The top's 150.
That's the max.
All right. Any other major points?
No, I didn't expect any waivers, and that's really it.
Right, and a couple we, we're gonna, we just put together here, so. If you want to lead with, I guess, the main component, I'm not sure how, how to.
Are we talking about the fiscal impact study?
That and the mechanical.
Yeah, and the uh, Lou, two issues that had come up uh at reviewing the fiscal impact study, there seemed to be a few discrepancies. I don't think anything major, but the board did want it to be um, if it needed to be revised, that it be revised before next month.
Yeah, I, we discussed that about a couple of months ago with the planning commission. There's, I think the discrepancy is one of our reports doesn't count the basement area, and one of it does count the basement area, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we can, you know, we can true that up if that's a condition, but it won't change any of the fiscal analysis. The fiscal analysis was based on what we believe will be the assessed square footage of the building.
Right, there were, there were a couple other um items that were picked up where the numbers appear to be incorrect. For example, and this is just cleaning it up at this point in time, but the um earned income tax uh should be $4,777 based on the 30 employees. Um, the impact study shows 47,000.
Okay.
Somewhere there's a typo.
We'll talk to Dave Babett and have him.
And then there's a franchise fee, which is, which is 16,000 or so in your, in your report. It should be 8,000. And um, I think the interest earning projection should be 1,500. I'm not sure what the original.
Where'd you get this?
But, but we can, we can send you the specifics.
Yeah, that would be great. We'll have Babett.
And you can look at it and confirm it and agree with it. And, and just have a condition to rectify that fiscal impact analysis, if you would. Sure.
Dave Babett will make the adjustments in that. If I can get the list from Zach, I'll provide them to him, and we'll have it back to you in a week.
Yep, yep, that works. Yeah, these are questions, somebody had posed some questions to Scott. They were just more computational stuff. We'll get them over to you. You want to hit the?
Yeah, and then the other one, Lou, which uh I've spoken to Charlie about, we've been emailing, I think even up to today, is in reference to the mechanics lien and making sure that that is secured by a letter of credit. And I think we can work that out between the three of us.
Yeah, I, I've been following the emails back and forth, and it, it seems like you have a doable, we, there's a doable path for securing that obligation. In the event it ever becomes an obligation, which it won't, but we'll secure it anyway.
Yeah, I think those were the only, only two conditions.
Sure.
That were relatively new. I think you've got, you've got another list or?
I don't have a list of conditions just yet. I mean, I don't know if you want to run through the waivers, Jack. Um, like the other project, probably not to the same extent, we'll come up with a list of conditions. We'll review them with the applicant, of course, and um, that would be the next step. But do you want to run through the waivers, just so everyone's clear on those?
I think Arrow had five, there's only, I think it was really four. There's three stormwater, and I don't know if you want to get into each one, but they're, they're all about the, we have to do, we have a karst geology. So we're using the MRC concept, managed release concept. And when you use the MRC concept, these waivers are automatic. You have, you really have to get them to even do the concept. So it has to do with the karst and the size of the orifice and whether you can infiltrate, which we can't. Um, and there's three waivers to achieve the goals that we need for, for stormwater. Um, the other, one of them was about landscape architect seal, but we are, our plan is sealed by landscape architects, so that's not a waiver. And the only other one was, was for sidewalk, but it's more of a procedural. We are providing um sidewalk from Malvern Hunt down to the trail um instead of lesser sidewalk and lineal footage uh along the small amount of frontage that we have. If you, yeah, point, there's a small amount of frontage there that's in that awkward section across from Malvern Crossing, where there's guide rail and lotting utilities and guide wires, and you wouldn't even put, it wouldn't make sense. So instead, we're putting actually more sidewalk lengthwise from Malvern Hunt Way down to the trail. Uh, and that's going to include a couple ADA ramps, new ADA ramps to cross uh Swedesford Road. That's more a procedural waiver because it's.
Okay, and, and I apologize, Doctor Everbach, would, would you care to make any, any comments or highlight anything in your review working with us?
Thank you for inviting me. Um, it really isn't necessary. You guys have made up your minds, and I think it's the right decision. I, I'll just be brief. I was hired to be an advocate for the township and the township residents, especially in Malvern Hunt, to make sure that they are not going, their lives are not going to be ruined by noise from this thing. Um, two comments I would make is the trees will look great, but they won't do anything for the sound. What will do something for the sound is the noise barrier wall that I suggested and that they agreed to, and I think it will make a big difference. Um, their consultant uses the same kind of methods and the same kind of software and stuff that I do and many others do. I think they did a competent job. I fact-checked them, and I actually made some uh follow-up measurements just to make sure mine matched theirs, and it did. So I, gave me confidence. And then um, the original plan involved running the um, the, the cooling towers that were closest to Malvern Hunt at a, at three-quarter speed or lower, two thirty, you know, 30% to cut back on the noise on that side. With the noise barrier wall, that's not even necessary, even if they're run at full speed, which they assure me they probably will never do. But if they do, they'll still be way under the ordinances because of the wall. So it was a belt and suspenders approach. I feel confident that the residents of Malvern Hunt are going to be protected. I will say that it doesn't mean they won't ever hear it. It's certainly true that the lawnmowers are louder, but on Christmas Eve, there are not going to be any lawnmowers. And on, in the little walls between the traffic on Swedesford Road, they might hear a distant hum. That's what they're going to experience. So I just want to go on record as saying, it's not going to be silent, but I think it's definitely going to be under the ordinances.
And Doctor, one, one of the questions I had early on was that if you were standing right next to those, those uh.
Cooling towers?
Yeah, would, would that, would it be a constant hum, or is it intermittent at all?
No, it's going to be constant. Um, it'll have two components. There'll be kind of a rushing sound, which is the air blowing, so the sort of turbulent sound. And then there'll be a blade passing frequency, which is kind of a hum having to do with the spinning of the blades, the number of times per second the blades whip around. We've all experienced these, every air conditioner you've ever heard of, every compressor unit has that, that combination, including the ones in your houses. It's just a bigger version of that. Um, no one's going to be standing next to these things. Uh, at least no resident of the township who, who would worry about that. And it is true that there, that these residents are far away. However, uh, you don't, you don't get, you know, a fast drop-off. It, it, the sound lowers six decibels for every doubling of distance. And there's not really another doubling of distance from the property line to the Malvern Hunt. But six decibels is a noticeable difference. It's the difference between am I talking to you in this voice, am I talking to you in this voice? Still hear me? It's not as loud. So um, so the upshot of all that is I feel confident that the township has, has done due diligence on this. Um, probably a good idea to check that all the implementation is done right and da-da-da-da. You, you have ordinances to do enforcement for nuisance and for other things. So, yeah, we probably won't come to that, but, you know, you always have to check. Trust but verify.
Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
No, no comments on, anyone in the audience have any questions? Okay.
Okay. All right, in that case, I'll make a motion to authorize a solicitor to prepare the uh, a resolution for Land Development 14 dash 2023 for the Swedesford Road Data Center Preliminary Plan with conditions as stated earlier and the customary conditions that are part of every resolution.
And for specifically for this, as Dr. Everbach had mentioned, we may want to do post-occupancy um noise studies.
Sure. Reserve that right, sure.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, good to go.
Till July. I know, I, I've seen if you're paying attention.
That was the other one.
June.
Yeah, yeah. This is Toll Brothers.
Just take it off the stand.
All right.
You guys ready?
Yes.
Okay, um, Zach, you ready? You got things organized? You ready?
Should I just go? Okay, um, good evening, Allison Zar on behalf of Toll Mid-Atlantic LP Company, Inc. Um, we're here this evening regarding an amended final land development plan for the Knickerbocker Tract. Um, I know this board is quite familiar with the tract, and despite the fact that this is a large property that went through an extensive previous land development process, what we're here for tonight is pretty simple. Um, the amendment focuses on one area of the site in particular, and that is the amenity area of the site. Um, there, as, as the, as the board knows, the developer that took it through the approval process is not necessarily a full-time residential home builder. Toll acquired the townhouse portion of the property um and did a more thorough design of clubhouse and recreational amenities. So um, there's nothing that's being eliminated. If anything, things were somewhat reconfigured on the site. So um, this is the appropriate exhibit to show you. The top portion of this exhibit shows uh what was previously approved. There's a, there was a clubhouse, a pool, some sport courts, a dog park um and related parking with the clubhouse. There are also stormwater management basins that you will see on the eastern side of those facilities. I also want to note while we're looking at this, that the dog parks were pushed up towards um houses that were proposed and along a parking field that was somewhat separated um from the rest of the amenity space. Um, so then, Zach, if you want to shift to the second part of this. Um, so this bottom part of the plan shows what we're proposing to amend. Um, so this updated plan pulls the dog park away from the residential houses that's on the western side or the left side of the plan. That's been pulled down and away from the parking field that's in the top corner. Um, reconfigured parking. We have pickleball courts that have been, also been pulled further away from the residences. Um, reconfiguration of pool and clubhouse. Um, Toll, you know, doing these across the country, spends a lot of time on configuring the angles and how things work and where the sun is and that kind of thing when you're using the amenities. Um, and then the stormwater basin i- in the area, the grading was slightly redone to accommodate that. So it actually results in a slight reduction in impervious coverage from what was there previously. Um, and I will also note, there is a tot lot, I forgot to mention that, that was in a different part of the community. It wasn't centralized with the rest of the amenities, and it's been pulled into the amenity area. Um, so we did have a couple of comment letters, one from Arrow, one from Bowman, and one from your landscape reviewer. Um, the landscape reviewer didn't have any comments, they were satisfied. Um, the first plan that Zach pulled up was actually the specific landscaping plan for this area of the site. Um, and everything else is a will comply, we're not requesting any waivers. The Bowman letter had some items that either were, they're sort of cleanup items, not specific to this, but everything is, is a will comply for us. So um, if anyone has any questions, we also do have a picture of the clubhouse if anybody would like to see it. Okay. Yeah. So that's um a rendering of what it'll look like, and I think we have another view that shows you, a couple of views, actually. This shows you the pool, the other side.
And the east Whiteland skyline.
Yes, and the east, yes, exactly, exactly what we talked about. We had a little bit of artist uh, uh, you know, took a little liberty on the uh east Whiteland skyline in the background.
Uh, what's?
Yes, I thought everybody would like, is that nice? I'm not guaranteeing that that will be there, but.
Oh, that's funny. What's your current timing, your stage of development?
Um, so uh, financial security has been posted for phases one and two, and uh Brian can fill this, fill you in a little bit. Brian Thier from Toll Brothers is here, but currently actively under construction. And then if you want to talk about when, you know, where you are and when this would be implemented. It's a four-phase project, by the way.
Good evening, uh, Brian Thier from Toll Brothers. Uh, we are, we've paved the first section, coming out of the cul-de-sac in the back of the business center up to like past the first intersection. We started our model home construction. Um, we'll probably start, we'll open for sale in June is the plan, open to the public, and um start settling homes later this year. The goal would be, once we get through this approval process, re-record the plan, is to start the amenities right away, so late summer. Get them underway so they're, you know, ready for opening next season is the, is the plan.
Are you, are you guys giving away a tire to every house? That's an inside joke uh for anybody that's been on the property.
No.
Wise choice.
Um, and Zach just pulled up sort of the overall plan, so you can see where the amenity space is in context of the rest of the site. So tonight we are looking for um your uh approval to move forward with an approval resolution.
What's the current price point thinking, if you have it?
We're starting in the 700s.
Okay. And what, what does Anfield actually, does it actually represent European soccer?
Um, we stole that from Jason Dempsey. So Anfield is, uh, Jason Dempsey was a fan of Liverpool, and their home stadium is called Anfield.
Okay.
To further elaborate, if you look at the road names, they're all road na- he told me this, they're all road names in Liverpool, apparently, so that's where they came from. It's a, it's a whole soccer theme, or football, I guess, we should call it.
Don't, don't we have enough American football lingo to use?
He, he, he did at one point say he wanted to make soccer fields. I guess this is as close as he could get.
Yes, I guess it's as close as you can get, yes. I mean, I will say from a road name perspective, when you deal with conflicts, which when you do this a lot, you realize there are a lot of conflicts. It did make it easier from that perspective.
Okay, uh, do you want to make a motion?
I would gladly make a motion to, what, are we drawing up anything or just approve?
Authorize the solicitor.
Authorize, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a solicitor prayer resolution for the Land Development LD dash 13 dash 2021 for Anfield at Malvern. Uh, the land development for Knickerbocker redevelopment for the clubhouse.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, Zach, do you want to lead us on this portion?
Yep, so this is sort of an update from a presentation a few months back. Um, the folks from TriPoint Property are here this evening, kind of give a little bit of an update as well. But when the board discussed the property at 52 East Swedesford, uh, there was a couple of concept plans that TriPoint had prepared. Um, sort of at the, after some discussions with staff to try to see, you know, what else could the site be aside from just the existing office, the residential, et cetera, uh, that was proposed initially? So the site plan that the, the board seemed to be the most supportive of was the residential with some retail facing Swedesford Road with a self-storage facility in the back to sort of support the residential in some sense. Since that time, staff and solicitors' office have been working on some revised language to the CGO or corporate gateway overlay that would accommodate this project. There's some changes to the allowable uses within the ordinance. There are changes to the applicable floor area ratio, so the amount of floor area relative to the lot size. There's some additional design guidelines and architectural standards and some, I'll say some more procedural aspects about the conditional use process would accompany any, prior to any land development for, to construct. So I'm happy to walk through the revisions and as much or as little detail as the board likes. I'm sure Andy would love to give you an update on the site plan and any other questions you might have. So I just really wanted to provide an update and kind of let you know where we're at on it and get any feedback we can.
Good evening, my name is Andy Hicks, I'm with TriPoint Properties. Thank you for your time tonight.
No three-bedroom places, huh Andy?
No three bedrooms.
You're ahead the game already.
We talked about this a few months ago. We took a look at this site, as you know, currently it is a 135,000 square foot, three-story vacant office building. It's sitting next, it sits next to Arlo Apartments. We would like to redevelop the property since we don't think that this much large block office space is going to have a future going forward. So we think that this piece of property in this location, we spent over a year looking at possible uses. We looked at how could we make it multi-use? We spent a number of meetings, probably six, seven meetings, with township staff and shared ideas. And we came up with a plan that we think kind of fits in that very comfortable spot. We have retail, we have low-density apartments, and we have self-storage. So we're talking about first-floor amenity retail. So breakfast, lunch, restaurant, other stores that would support both Arlo Apartments as well as our Apartments. People could walk to, use, be very nice, and also service the local businesses. We, we've planned for 216 apartment units. 75% of them one-bedroom, 25% two-bedroom, no three bedrooms. Each of these buildings are smaller than what you typically would see being built today. We chose not to go with a wrap design. We have four buildings that have apartments. Each of these buildings, like I said, is, feels a little smaller. They're built on grade. So each floor at the most, I think has like 12 or 14 units on a floor in the big buildings B and C. And then at the rear of the property, we've designed self-storage. This area can hold up to 66,000 square feet of self-storage. In the southwest, in the United States, there's a couple developers that are now, as they build apartment units, they're also building in tandem with self-storage. And we kind of like that idea, especially with Arlo next door. We believe between the two, again, there's a lot of symmetry and would just be almost like another amenity as well as keeping people from having to drive somewhere to get stuff or store stuff. So like I said, this plan's been a long time in the making and we feel very good about it. As Zach was saying, the current overlay for this property was pretty rigid and when it was passed seven, eight years ago, I think it only contemplated Arlo Apartments and our apartment building. And it really, there was no room for any modification or redevelopment. So we've been working with Zach to try to kind of broaden it just to allow a little more flexibility. And, you know, we'd like to continue moving forward. I think the documents, 85, 90% kind of negotiated the way through. And I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth Zach, but I think Zach was looking for comments, direction from this, this board before we went any further.
Well said, I know Andy gave a little bit of insights on like sort of the, the current status of the project. I just have to say Andy's been, and Ron have been very patient despite some of the, I'll say some of the financial considerations, the difficulty monitoring or marketing the site. So I do think a lot of these issues that we've kind of worked through. We've tried to, you know, we, we need to be mindful of like not creating too many ripple effects throughout this district, I can show you where it is. But the, that's, was kind of like a primary concern here. We want to make sure that we're not having unintended consequences on other properties. We're not opening up sort of the, the floodgates, so to speak, for other properties be redeveloped in this way. I think we've got, I think we've got appropriate safeguards that way. That's, that's something that I think we're, we're still kind of refining. We've talked about some procedural aspects. So in this case, the way that we had envisioned it as township was that the Arlo Apartments would likely be subject to an amended conditional use to allow this to come through under the revised ordinance. That's not been set in stone. Our concern at that time was that, you know, the Arlo Apartments got there as a result of a conditional use approval, where the office building was retained, there's shared access. So there's some, I'll say just generically, some co-mingling of property rights. We don't need to get into that, we don't need to resolve that tonight, but it's just something we've been trying to work through with Ron and Andy so that we, you know, we're doing it the right way and we're kind of, you know, cleaning up whatever loose ends there might have been coming out of the old plan into this one. So that's kind of been the theme of the last couple of weeks, I would say.
You're just trying to make sure that this overlay as revised does not create any zoning issues for the existing Arlo. That's the short version?
That, and that additional properties like, so for example, the Arlo Apartments sort of in between two larger office properties. Our concern is that, okay, so Arlo was developed, this property could be redeveloped. We wouldn't, we would be concerned if then the other apartments, let's say to the, property to the east then would take, I'll say, take advantage or also utilize this ordinance, you know, where ultimately we would like, that would double or triple the number of units that would have otherwise been permitted here. So that's kind of just like, like I said, not something I want to overly fixate on here, but that's kind of been like the theme, I would say, more recently once some of the initial revisions were.
The location of the overlay as it exists also covers Arbor Ridge to the east of Arlo at the moment?
Correct.
And further over to Cedar Hollow Road or not?
So Cedar Hollow Road is across the line. We did put some language in the ordinance that, so the minimum lot area to take advantage of this overlay is 20 acres. So really, you couldn't just pick any of these properties and develop it as an apartment.
Right.
But we did want to specify that the assemblage would need to be strictly within East Whiteland so that properties in Tridifern couldn't be used to, I'll say inflate the minimum lot area. So again, these are just kind of like the little scenarios we've been trying to run through to make sure that we're not, you know, getting something we didn't anticipate.
Question I have is to Zach and Bernadette. If we approve this overlay and the property is sold to someone else, it's obviously the overlay is going to follow the property, right? Is there any point where that can be reversed in the event of the sale?
Is your question that whether, like if the property, like if Andy were to sell the property, that the zoning wouldn't go with it, is that what you mean?
I'm just, what I'm asking is, is that obviously the overlay is going to follow with the property, but if we were to, if the property were to change hands, do we have any, any options to reverse that overlay?
No, so the zoning carries through, that's not really a, like a property or a deed-related thing. One thing, if, if part of your concern is that a different developer might want to do the project differently. We haven't discussed this, I wouldn't expect Andy or Ron to commit to anything like this. But in the past, there's been things like just basic concepts or renderings that have been deed restricted, that if a property is to be developed as an apartment, it's got to kind of look like this as an additional safeguard.
I, I think, I think there's a comfort level at this point in time for, for looking at the overlay and what's going on with you, with your plan and with what you're designing and your reputation. And you know the reason why I'm asking that question as far as change, because it's.
Yeah, the question is what flexibility does another landowner under the same zoning have to change the design?
And that's, and that's where I was going to jump in, Zach. I was going to say that the current overlay requires two uses. In the new draft, Zach put in three uses. So he made it a lot more difficult. And each use has to have a minimum, so I mean, you could reconfigure, but still, it's going to require three uses. So it's not like somebody's going to come in and put 700 units. I mean, it's, there's, the FAR is fair, but it's not crazy by any means. I mean, I think you were looking at a project tonight that's bigger than anything that could be put on our, our, our site. So I mean, I think Zach has worked on behalf of the township to kind of keep whatever happens there, whether it's me, hopefully, or if somebody else, that it's pretty restrained.
Yeah, that's true. We just tried to create some minimum standard so it's not, you know, an apartment with like a token office, like just, just for an office's sake to check the box. That's kind of was the idea there. I mean, there are, if, I think one of the things that the board has liked and one of the things that Andy likes is it's more of a campus setting. Like there's, there's separate buildings, it's not what you call like a Texas donut or something that's wrapped around a parking garage or something like that. Again, I wouldn't expect Andy or Ron to agree to this in this meeting, but there could be some pretty basic, simple stuff put into the ordinance that sort of requires there to be multiple buildings. You know, the exact language off the top of my head, I don't know. But I think we could talk about some ways to ensure that the plan, whatever plan would come through, whether it's Andy or somebody else, maybe you, that it would actually look like what's being proposed here. And I don't think it would have to be too onerous or give them too much agita that they've, you know, really locked themselves in too much. So we can certainly discuss that if that's something you're concerned with.
Sure, again, I, I think there's, I think we're comfortable with the, the design and I'd hate to, hate to have it blown up and changed to something that we don't really have as much input in as we have had with you generally.
And yeah, not to belabor, but there are architectural review during the conditional use process, so there's going to be some ability to, you know, sometimes people come in with a, a rendering or they don't, and you, you're kind of left guessing what it'll look like. I don't think that that'll be the case, there'll be an appropriate level of review for that.
The paths or sidewalks that look like they're on Swedesford, crossing to the other side and then connecting to another path that goes to the Grove, those are all there now, right?
Yeah, those were constructed by the Arlo Apartments and some of the other stuff off-site was from some other recent projects.
It's good walkability then.
Very good, right? And we would tie into all of that, make it so both our property and Arlo would be very walkable, walk to the Grove, you know, into other businesses, even down to the, the hotel. So, I mean, we like it, these uses, we think they work really well here.
Have we been approached by any other vacant office building owners?
Not recently.
Okay, alright, okay.
We, as the board knows, we get, this is like the hot, hot topic right now. This is the highest and best food group, especially for redevelopment, properties that we, you know.
And I think like we said when we were here before, one of the challenges this property has, not only with COVID and work from home and stuff, but when Arlo was constructed, the Ingress Egress was designed in a shared manner. So when we were showing the office building, tenants would come in and be like, well, I had to drive through an apartment complex to get to the office building, this doesn't really represent the corporate image that we're looking for. So as you can see on that, actually, I don't know if you can bring up the, the one where we overlaid the campus design on top of? Because that really demonstrates the, the shared access. So the only four-way lighted intersection requires you to drive through Arlo, the back of Arlo and then through Arlo to get to our property.
I think it, it looks good. Take another, keep working a little more to refine it to the final point where it's acceptable to both and then move forward.
Is your Downingtown vendor still coming with you on the project?
We just talked about it today.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks Andy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a good question, it's a fair question. I would say maybe we should plan to meet next week and talk about some of the more recent revisions we talked about. Mostly just updating some square footages and things like that that are outlined. But yeah, that's, why don't we try to get something on the books for next week? At least to kind of huddle up on this, with stuff we talked, sort of going in and out of the planning commission.
Very good.
Thank you.
Great. Certainly done, any questions for, nope? Okay. Okay, John Matea, zoning and code enforcement updates.
Alright, for the, I'm sorry. Yes, for, for the coming month, we only have one application. It's the application to Great Valley School District. We've heard from them previously. They, we have decided to downsize their application, done away with parts of it. And their representative could probably tell you a little bit better on what we're, what we're planning. I know you got the information in your packet already, so.
Thanks John, I'm John Kelly, civil engineer with T and M Associates here on behalf of Great Valley. As John said, Great Valley has elected to revise their application for the zoning for the signage, reduced the number of monument signs from three down to one, and also have removed the LED component that was a part of one of the three signs. So three monument signs down to one, that's non-LED, and then still the same building signage that we had on the application when we were here in March. I think you've all had a chance to take a look at the plans. If you have any questions about them, I'm more than happy to answer them.
I have none.
Looks fine now.
Thank you.
Very well revised.
Thanks, appreciate it.
So I guess at this point in time, we have no need to send the, so, no need to send the solicitor, unless of course, you know, nothing to do.
I would just need a motion, I believe you made a motion, I'm sorry. I believe I would need a motion to indicate that you are not sending this, you're withdrawing the prior motion and not sending the solicitor based on the revised zoning application.
Sure, I'll make a motion to withdraw our previous opposition to the signage as proposed last month. And we do not, we do not need to send a solicitor to the upcoming zoning hearing board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, John. On the enforcement updates, besides the several regular issues that I work on, we have been getting several reoccurring complaints that have popped up with the arrival of the spring weather. we have been getting several reoccurring complaints that have popped up with the arrival of the spring weather. Residents, with that, residents are reminded that the township adopted and enforces the International Property Maintenance Code. That code requires amongst other things, the grass and vegetation be maintained at eight inches or less in height. Additionally, exterior areas of your property, now that people are doing spring cleanups, are required to be maintained in a clean, safe, and sanitary condition. Last but not least, we've got an uptick in complaints about vehicles being kept on residential properties. Vehicles that are on properties must be licensed and inspected and not in any disrepair or disassembly. I, I've been visiting a few residential sites, knocking on some doors and handing out some information and have gotten a lot of voluntary compliance or hasn't been any enforcement issue so far. But it's, it's a work in progress.
Okay, John, thank you. Any public comments?
Hello, my name is Deborah Mobile, Forty-two Village Way. I have, actually, been a while, I have a lot. Can you hear me? Are we okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My first area of concern has to do with the triangle at twenty-nine and thirty, which was rebuilt and landscaped. The triangle, which cost the township thousands of dollars. I don't know if any of you drive, buy it on a regular basis, but I drive through it all the time, buy it all the time. Today I looked at it and it looked like trash. As a matter of fact, it looked worse than it did when it was cement. Unfortunately now, the township is going to have to pay its employees to go on that triangle and weed it and re-landscape it on a regular basis. So in the future, I would ask, when you have these beaut, I mean, I, I hate weeding. So I'm thinking of all the time it's going to take to pluck all those weeds out. In the future, please think about beautifying with some kind of native plants, maybe short wildflowers, something that you could go in at the end of the season and take a weed whacker too. Because it would be a lot less time and a better use for our employees of, of East Whiteland. My second thing is a question. By the way, I, I'm very excited about the initiative to raise funds for open spaces. You know how I feel about that? But when taxpayers hear more taxes, many of them will automatically turn it off without realizing what it is. And my question is, how do you plan to promote hype? The benefits of this before people go to the polls and see more taxes and vote now?
You're going to be the tip of the spear for our door-to-door campaign of convincing people to vote yes. How's that sound, Deb? This is Peter's.
You know, I will, I will volunteer to help.
Excellent.
I just got bullied into it and I certainly will volunteer to help.
I'll be right there with you, Deb, because I'm very passionate about this myself.
I'm wondering about bringing it up at like some of these events during the summer. You know, they're on open land.
Deb, we've got a, we've got a, we're working again with Natural Lands, who has done this process for, for countless number of townships and they kind of have a blueprint that we're following. But I can tell you that we're going to be starting to put out informational packages and details on all of our social media sources to educate people and to allow them to start thinking about it and generate questions. So that'll be the first phase. We're still trying to grab as many homeowners association email lists that we can so we can, you know, we can push out information like this to them directly. So if you have any control with any emails for your, for your area up there on the hill, that would be great. But those are, those are the, the initial processes that we're going to follow at this point in time.
Okay. Well, Land Trust is certainly the expert at these things. So and since I've been bullied, I will take it in good spirit and call me when you, we need that.
I'm going to hold you there, Deb.
I know you will. The third thing has to do with the, the June deadline for once again, the approval for the proposal for the Bishop Tube project. And as it nears, I understand that there's been some buzz and some discussion about allowing some option, say a phased approach in unaffected areas. Now, excuse me if, if I, you know, I've been a little remiss lately and, and I'm hoping I'm hearing wrong, but I have two comments to make about that type of discussion. First of all, you, we do not yet know which areas are unaffected. The state doesn't know, so how could you? The last thing that I saw, the state wanted to propose the idea of a big, large filtration pond, which pretty much looked in their rendering to take out the middle, the whole middle of the property. So, and the vast majority of it. So again, I know what's going to be affected and what's going to be needed for the cleanup for the, for the rest of the property as well. The state isn't sure, sure, and neither can CDP. My second comment to keep in mind, and I'm going to quote this on myself, is you promised, when you gave preliminary approval to the project, it was with certain free conditions that CDP agreed to. You assured us that this was the best way to protect the citizens from both lawsuits and environmental catastrophes. Well, one of the agreed to conditions was that no construction would begin until the site was fully remediated. As of now, it hasn't even been partially remediated, let alone fully. So no construction began. Nowhere in the agreement could I see partially remediated site-based construction. I am asking that you keep to your word and that you hold CDP to theirs. No construction should be allowed on the Bishop Tube site at this time.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Donna? All right. Moving on to consent agenda. I'll read it in its entirety and if you've got any questions, pause me, smack me on the side of the head, whatever. And we'll talk about it. Approve the meeting minutes from April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Ratify the payments of bills for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Accept the treasurer's report as of March twenty, March twenty twenty-four. Ratify approval of request for waiver of land development at WLD dash fifteen dash two zero two three for three county view amended resolution following discussion at meeting on April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I have a quick question on that.
Okay. Peter?
I guess this is for Bernadette. This, this doesn't seem like it should be in the consent agenda. Is, I, I don't, I just feel like I haven't seen this in a consent agenda before. Is it something we missed and had to reapprove?
Which item was that, Peter?
It was the country view.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that didn't even register.
Waiver of land development.
Yeah, so sorry.
It doesn't seem like a consent agenda item.
Yeah, so at the last month's meeting, we, the board was comfortable with the plan, but there was two items we wanted that weren't in the resolution that I would just say came up at the meeting. One was for, to allow deferral of the sidewalk. So we included a condition about that. And then the other one was to post financial security for the stormwater improvements. So we added language into the last month's draft, like literally just a new J and a new K. And they're agreeable to those. So since it was basically approved with those in mind and discussed last month, we just thought it'd be an easy.
It was just sort of add, like Zach said, it was just adding those two conditions that you verbally asked for at the last meeting.
Okay.
Because we had already prepared the resolution, we just needed to add those to it.
I'm now well, more well informed, thank you.
Moving on to E, approve time and materials reimbursement agreement, Septa shop and yard expansion.
I, I, I'm sorry, I have another question. What's this about, Catherine?
Sure, yeah, this is, oh, I'm sorry. This is related to the ongoing work at the Septa shop and yard expansion. The, sometimes this comes up. You might remember there was a similar agreement that was put in place that the school district requested when they started their five-six center work. We sometimes get these requests for very large projects where our method of calculating permit fees may exceed what the township's actual expenses are on those projects. And so you typically see that with very high dollar projects. So it's very unusual and infrequent. So Septa made a similar request that the school district made. And so this is, basically would allow them to reimburse the township on an actual expense basis. So we would bill them monthly for the time that's actually expended.
Okay, thank you.
F, ratify the proposal from Princeton Hydro for four thousand dollars for the stormwater management analysis. G, ratify the radio purchase for assistant fire marshal, six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. H, approve firearm replacement purchase in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Peter?
Chris, is that to buy, buy guns or to buy the police officer's new guns? Like buyback guns, like to get them off the street? Or is that to buy officers' new guns?
No. It's to trade in our guns and get different guns.
Okay. I just didn't quite understand. Thank you.
Okay.
I.
Excuse me? What, the thirty-one thousand, four ninety-one?
And twenty-four cents.
Oh, but it's actually going to be not exactly that by the time we're done because there's so many.
And, and to help, help you through it, there is already like a budget of reserve set up for purchase of guns that exists out there at this point in time. I approve purchase of new body, body cameras and vehicle cameras, a five-year plan, fifty thousand dollars per year. And J, final payment to Armor and Sun's Electric for the Route twenty-nine Traffic Signal Performance Measures Project or the Green Light Go grant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And that is it. So if you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. At this point in time, at nine twenty, we are adjourned. Thank you.